Now, any of you have been here. You got a family, you got a wife, you got kids, you got carnous, you got mortgages. You may lose a job. Somebody need to mute because we're echoing. You may lose a job. But you immediately gonna do what? Any man worth his salt is gonna do what?
Find another job?
How soon?
Immediately?
Immediately, before the day is over. If I walk out your door that morning and you done cut me loose or whatever, guess what? By that evening, I better have something tomorrow. Why?
And the bills are not gonna stop.
And folks depending on me.
That's right.
And see, a lot of times, we don't want that responsibility. You mean somebody else's victory depends on my walk? You see? We don't want that responsibility. Now. So, we gotta be careful, these subtle substitutes. Another subtle substitute, if we're not careful, will come in this ta ethne. Somebody spell that for us, spell that for support, T A. E T H N A E, I think, E A, I can't get the last two right most time.
Which word, Methuselah?
No, ta ethne.
Hmm, T A apostrophe. Actually, I'm like you, I get those last two mixed up too.
Yeah, it's E T H N E A or A E, it's the last part. Ta ethne. And many times, it'll be ponta, P O N T A, ponta ta ethne, which means all the nations. All the nations, ponta ta ethne, all the nations. Now, here's a subtle substitute Satan will put before us if we're not careful. That our disciple making may produce a good product. It may be a good process. It may multiply. But if it's only producing a a homogeneous product multiplication, then it's not fully great commission. Homogeneous means same gene, same ethnicity. Now Brother Black mentioned that he had a lot of different, he had fifty different languages in some of his groups where he's doing disciples, and they will multiply. They will multiply. He probably had a lot of tribes in there. But guess what? They're homogeneous, they're Africans. Remember the other morning Edward was talking about how many tribes and languages and countries he could reach there in Africa? And we remember, we hit him with, yeah, bro, but it's still homogeneous. They're still Africans. Now, if I'm in a group of folks, and there's Germans there, there's Asians there, Europeans there, there are Asians there, there are Filipino's there, and I say, oh, I say, if I say Africans, all Africans stand up. Who gonna stand up? I don't care if they're Africans from Congo, Uganda, Kenya, South Africa, I don't care, they gonna do what?
Stand up.
Who gonna stand up?
All of all Africans, they stand up.
All Africans. So, even though they may be different tribes, languages, and countries, they're still what?
Africans. All Africans.
So, we can multiply uh homogeneically. You can write that one down, support.
Okay.
We can multiply homogeneically. But it still won't be a true fulfillment of the commission and what it calls for. Because it calls for what?
Our nation. And our language. And our people.
Come on now. What do our churches look like?
Yeah, wow.
And even in Bible school, they teach the young pastors and stuff, when you go plant a church, you'd be more effective if you do it with your own people group. And back when Dr. Jones, Brother Black, Brother Credit, and some of us and where we came from, people would even tell you, you should only marry people of your own ethnicity. And they would say, some would say, that's what the Bible say. Come on now, ain't nobody gonna help me?
Oh, yeah, that's exactly right.
Amen.
Hundred percent.
But that's not commission. And what I see sometimes is that even when a person, say a person is from Africa, and 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 support and I seeing is, they'll go to another country and maybe in school there, or they maybe going to another country to do disciple making or preaching and teaching. If they're African, they'll go to another whole country, maybe the Middle East, maybe it's Europe, and guess who they'll go teach?
African community.
African community.
Yes.
Their disciple making and their outreach and their ministry is still homogeneous. That's not full, that's not really fulfilling the commission. And while they're in that other country, there are, the the nations are there, and they don't even reach for them.
See that here a lot too, yeah.
So that really hit me, support, when it just starts setting in on me, we're teaching a homogeneous group setting up in Turkey. Cause when they first asked me, support, I thought it's gonna be people from Turkey, I really did. And I got on there, and it's just Africans, not just Africans, but it's Africans, I'm teaching Africans in Turkey, oh, where the people in Turkey at? And I'm and I'm gonna continue to challenge them because they're gonna be there four, six years in school. So the question is, what does our disciple making look like? Is it only homogeneous? You see? And even Jesus himself. Now, he discipled uh those Jewish boys, but when he left there, what did they start reaching to?
Back to the Jews.
What about Peter? No, they they went, they started going for the nations.
Yeah, they did, you know? Peter was dabbling between Jews and Gentiles, he was teetering trying to get it.
But God got on him when he showed him that sheep, and he went over there with carnius. Then he says, oh, I see now, God's no respect of persons. See, when prejudice has been ingrained in you for a lifetime, then it takes God awhile sometimes to break it down, but he will. Cause he will not stand up before him, it will not stand up before him when it comes to giving an account, an examination. It will not. What about Jesus' genealogy? Is it all Jewish?
Nope.
So
Not at all.
Yeah, so right there, even in his own genealogy, he shows that he he's about the nations.
Man, he had rehab from Jericho, many others.
Yeah. So one of Satan's subtle substitutes is if our disciple making is homogeneous, it's not truly great commission, it's not truly fulfilling the great commission.
So Mr. Kim, based on what you're saying, all across America, right now at eleven o'clock AM Central Standard Time is one of the most homogeneous times of the week in our nation. Corporations are more mixed than what's happening right now, would that be correct?
Yes, sir.
Wow.
We in trouble.
And and we would, and we will say, well, it's because the music, it's because the style of, we say it's the style of worship. What is that truly worship? You mean God will worship, you mean God will set up the kind of worship that eliminates other other ethnicities?
No.
And we was, and we will separate on something as shallow as music?
Right, well, well, the white people don't have no rhythm, Sue. So, so that
Yeah, I hear you.
That's a problem.
Well, yeah, well, the problem is, if music is a separator, don't have none.
Amen.
There you go.
Amen. I'm tracking you all the way.
If food and all these things is a separator, don't have it. Listen to what you want on the way there and on the way home, but if it's a separator that keeps us from gathering, don't have it.
But Sue, can I ask, can I say something to you, right quick? You know, one time before, uh you made a statement about how smart Satan was, right? And and since I've been uh digging into this book, I find out what you bringing out right now, Satan is a, is is really, really a smart guy, you know? Because people gonna be in church like Dr. Jones say, right now, all different ethnic group in church, but uh if I go to a all white church right now, everybody turning around and wonder why I'm in there. You know, look at me strange, like what is 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 this, is is he finna do something, is he violent? Especially if I go in there and uh have my hat turned sideways and and have on some Jordan tennis shoes and some baggy pants.
You're not gonna make it out, you're not gonna make it out, credit, you're not gonna
They gonna, they gonna, they gonna arrest me, same way white guy go into all black church, dressed in a suit like a detective. Yeah, everybody gonna start looking up, is he coming to get us, he coming to get me? Satan? Nobody had made me think about Satan as being smart as much as you do, Sue, when you told us that Satan coded the scripture back to thee. I use that on so many people, so now you telling me Satan now, uh but then I thought he was.
Yeah, and then even, what's a white church, what's a black church?
Black church is the one.
I'm just saying, those are terms we use to identify the ethnicities in there, but does the Bible say anything about a white church, black church, Mexican church?
No, sir, not at all.
Never seen it, never seen it.
It says ta ethne.
Hmm.
We go to all of them, all the time, just pick one and we go.
Yeah, but 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 wouldn't be better say there's a gathering of African Americans in that place, but um, I don't know, we that's another point of separation, right? Not to say God does not see color ethnicities, he does, he created them. But we've took it and made it a separation in the, in in the, in the body, right?
Correct. Sure did.
And there are, there are distinctions in each ethnicity, but the Bible was written to cross and to ascend above any of that that would separate us. It ascends above any of that. Because if it didn't, only Jews would come be knowing Christ now, not us.
That would be ingraved in.
He he wrote the original Tanakh in a language that primarily the Jewish people group would would read, understand, and those kind of things, but here we are, not of that ethnicity, and walking in the things of Christ. So it ascends, it ascends those things. But we let distinctions bring it back down and call and let it divide, right?
Yeah, dude, all the time.
We create distinctions in it that the scripture don't. And if somebody is my enemy from another ethnicity, what does God tell me to do with him?
Love him. Love you, Luke six twenty seven.
Is that just saying it, is that just saying the words?
Do it.
It's a verb, it's action, ain't it?
That's right.
Correct.
So
And that's a hard command.
Sir?
That's a hard command, a lot of people don't wanna do that.
And and we and we'll see it, like you said, this morning.
Yeah. Yeah.
You see? And so, so it's a, it's a subtle substitute. What people group would you say that you would not disciple? If somebody came to you and said, hey, I want to be your disciple, and I want you to pour into my life, and I I want you to autopsy your life to me, will you give me your time and and disciple me? Because I wanna be what I see in you. I want to be the Christ what I see in you, who would you turn down?
I don't know one, Sue.
Uh, if you
No one.
If you go back a few months or couple of years, I got by at least one that I I just wouldn't deal with.
Right.
I don't even wanna say it on them.
I'm with you. I'm with you.
We gotta, we gotta illuminate it, Sue, because like I say, uh when I was faced uh back in four years ago, when you came out and you told us about how Jesus, you called the uh the disciples prejudiced. And then you said how Jesus said, hey, we got to go to the other side. I wanna go to the other side. For one thing, they they don't wanna get in the water. Jesus was telling them, hey, we we got to go beyond where they was at. And uh and and that's where we are at like right now in our church, we don't wanna go beyond. We don't wanna go no further than where we at, cause we's comfortable there.
Yes, sir. And see, I can't be worrying about what they're doing, right?
Correct.
Because I I I'm not gonna stand and account for them.
Correct.
But I will for me. I will for me.
Got you.
And I gotta be the one who's walking this great commission out. And 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 see, God continues to illuminate more and more through this great commission. And what he illuminates, it ain't easy. And then we mentioned the term, it ain't easy, how, what did the disciples give for this commission, what did Jesus give for it?
They life.
Life.
Now, Jesus could have gave his life, he could have went to the cross at eighteen. He could have went to the cross at six, his blood was was just as period of days he was born, the day he died on the cross, if it's the blood, if it's the blood we needed, it could have, that could have happened about any time. But why did he spend three years pouring into twelve uh more people? Why did he stay around and model that age thirty to thirty-three as a rabbi?
Because he wanted to see them multiply or take the message further?
Yes, sir. And he wanted to put in place, it seems to me, wanted to put in place how he was gonna reach the world after he throwed them deuces and left out of here in Acts chapter one.
And then put it more personally because of real credit.
Yeah. And guess what? All of us gonna have an Acts chapter one verse nine. We're gonna be throwing the deuces on this world. What's gonna be left behind in our process that will continue to multiply souls into the kingdom when we left off this earth physically? Where he put the great commission in place to make sure that will continue to happen.
Mr. Kim, if you will, at some point, uh would you mind doing that math that you was telling me about, uh talking about this weekend about the implementation of the great commission? How how the world population and how one can reach so many, if if you don't mind, if 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 that fits in today?
Yes, sir, we can do that, okay, if you if one person shares the gospel with a thousand people a day, that'd be three hundred sixty-five thousand in a year. And then it'll be seven hundred thirty thousand in two years. It'd be over a million in three years. Right? Is that right, y'all?
One per day.
One per day, cause it's three hundred sixty-five days in a year. If you did a thousand a day, that's three hundred sixty-five thousand people in one year.
Okay, uh huh.
You double that, seven hundred thirty thousand in two years.
Okay.
You triple that, you over a million.
Okay.
Right? Right?
Yes, sir.
Mm-hmm. That's it, that's it, amazing.
All right, now if you froze the world population, if you froze the present world population, just froze it, nobody born, nobody died, seven billion people, it would take that person about nineteen thousand years to win the world, the present world population crisis. You think Satan, you think Satan got a problem with this person?
Oh, yeah, big problem.
Why?
Cause he's a, escaped those subtle things that have separated people, and you got the multiplication process going on.
Huh? He can't accomplish it. That's right, Satan ain't, Satan ain't got no problem with this person. Cause even if he lives a hundred years, if it takes nineteen thousand years to get the gospel by one person, a thousand a day to seven billion people, Satan gonna get a whole lot out of this. Does that make sense?
I understand what you're saying, now you're saying if that, just that one person is doing it, no, never, nobody else, okay? Yeah.
Well, let's just say, let's say, let's say it's a thousand people doing it. He still ain't gonna have no problem out of that. Cause it's still gonna take him a long time, they not gonna live long enough to get seven billion in a hundred years, they just think. That's addition, huh?
So what you're saying is the method of of the great commission, what we've been teaching, it mean that everybody is to do this, to get it done.
Everybody should do it, but this is addition.
Discipleship and evangelism is addition, is that what you're saying?
Well, let's 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 flip, let's let's do the other one.
Okay.
All right, now, year one, I I went Dr. Fred to Christ, and I disciple him for a whole year. The other guy got three hundred sixty-five thousand in one year. I ain't got but one. Year two, the other guy, guy got seven hundred thirty thousand. Year two, Dr. Fred gets one, I get another, we got four. Year three, this other person got over a million. We ain't got but eight by now. People gonna say our ministry is not effective. People, people gonna stop supporting me. But they say he ain't got but eight people out of three years. How long is it gonna take me to get seven billion people? It's gonna take about thirty-four to thirty-seven years. Because the first one is addition. The second is multiplication. What's gonna happen when we hit a million?
It's gonna explode into multiple millions.
The next year to be how many? Two. The next year, it'll be four. The next year to be what?
Eight million.
No, you ain't multiplying.
Twelve.
No, I didn't, I spoke too soon.
What's four times four?
Eight, sixteen.
Ah. And then the next year is gonna be what, what's sixteen times sixteen?
Thirty-sixteen. Two hundred fifty-six.
Two hundred fifty-six what?
Million, thousand.
Ah, ah. Now you double that again, you see how multiplication is what he set in place?
Okay, Mr. Kim, can I get you to go back just a little bit, please? Okay, you say at year one, you reach one, you reach me, year one, then you say, year two, what happened year two? Can you give me?
You get one, I get one, we got, we got, we 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 go to four.
Okay, oh, okay, all right, okay, year two, you get one, I get one. That's four, two times two. Help me out, I'm a little lost there, a little, I'm a little confused.
Okay, year one, me and you.
Okay, got it.
Year two, you go get one, year two, I go get one.
One, two.
So it's you, he, and two others, that's four.
Okay, got it, okay, four.
Now the four go get one each, that's eight.
Okay, uh-huh.
Then the eight go get one each, we got what?
Sixteen.
Alright, then the sixteen go get one each, where are we?
Thirty-two.
Yeah. We multiplying now.
Alright, okay. Okay, one, four, eight, sixteen, thirty-two. Alright, I think I can take it from here and get clear, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So what you saying, the first year you added. The second year, the, the second year, you start multiplying.
Well, look what happens in the book of Acts, if you study the book of Acts, then you have. You have, it says that God added to the church daily, right?
Right.
Now. Somebody, uh, I can't remember the verses off my head right now, but seem like, somebody go to Acts chapter six.
Got it.
Y'all seen anything there about multiplying?
And, uh, so what, verse two, he said, then the twelve summoned the multitude of the disciples and said. I thought that was hinting for it, but.
No, it'll say something about the disciples begin to multiply.
Uh, that, that'll be verse one.
What it say?
Okay, it say, now in, in the days when the disciple was increasing in numbers.
That word increased, somebody take it to to look it up. Go to verse two and then multiply. Look at that word increase. Somebody look at Greek word increase up.
King James said, the disciples was multiplied.
Ah. So in the first part of Acts. Uh, it says that he added to the church daily, right?
Correct.
Now, now we multiplying, adding machine done broke down. Yeah, plus two no, plus two no is the word multiplier, plus two no. What? Then you see the fruit in verse two, when it say the twelve called the multitude of disciples unto them. Okay. So the adding machine done broke down, now it's beginning to multiply. But when I was pastor, I used to go to the, uh, the, uh, the pastors meetings. On Mondays, you know, we had pastor meet on Monday, where we having lunch and, and, and somebody would preach and. They would, uh, encourage one another, this kind of thing. And then everybody would, many would give a testimony of, yeah, the Lord added three dots fellowship yesterday, he added this, he added that. I wonder what God think about that? When every year you talk about how much he added. Now.
I don't think God would be too pleased with us just adding when he done said we should be multiplying.
Come on. Now, go to Acts nine thirty-one, I'm, 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 I'm just going off this from memory. And I wanna have some talk, I, I, I feel like I'm talking too much. I don't wanna get in trouble with pastors, I feel like I'm talking too much, not giving enough room for discussion in here. But I'm just trying to show how subtle the enemy can drop a substitute in on us, y'all feel that?
I do, I feel it.
You said nine thirty-one?
Yeah, what'd it say?
So the church throughout. Is Judea, Galilee and Samaria enjoyed peace as it was being built up. And as it continued in the fear of the Lord and in the comfort of the Holy Spirit, it kept increasing.
Guess what that word increase is?
Multiplying.
Ah.
Cause in my book, and I'm reading out of the, uh, the translation, English Standard Version, it say the word must apply.
Yeah. So the adding machine broke down.
Right. Yeah. You have to do some multiplication.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So God is all about multiplying, and until we multiply, we would not reach. The, the unreached population out there, and you do that by multiplying disciples. Now, if you, if, and this, this get to your question, uh, uh, somebody had said about. I can't remember who said about the evangelism, this gets to the evangelism question. If you are making disciples and you're not evangelizing, guess what your disciples won't do?
The same thing.
Exactly.
So if we're gonna get, if we're gonna get at this three and a half billion that have not heard. And if I'm a disciple making, I better be getting that of myself, because if I don't, my downline won't either.
Soup, there's a phrase you pass down, your downline. That connects to that, oh, we, it said, it, you said some time ago that we, what we. Teach and preach what we believe, but we produce and reproduce what we are.
Yeah. Very good. So do y'all see some of the subtle substitutes the enemy can put out there? To hinder this commission and brother credit mentioning that, and, and all brother credit did was, was just. Give us terminology to what God said about him in the garden, that he's more crafty than anything created, basically. And remember, when he got Adam to eat that forbidden fruit or disobey, we just said it, when he got Adam disobeying the garden. He put all humanity into depravity, put all humanity in a lostness. And then he tried to take away that redemption. And when he was messing with Jesus all that time through, to make him mess up in his humanity, he failed there. So the next thing he wants to do, he's got to, he's got to make the commission not work. To get people and keep them lost. Till they die off his earth, does that make sense?
Yes.
So, so what he's doing now is he's tainting, he's tainting. And he's substituting the great commission, because that's what's keeping people. Uh, keeping people from seeing the model of Christ and hearing the message of salvation. And a substitute for that is addition. Filling stadiums, filling stadiums and blanking in the gospel.
But once again, Sue, like you say. The Bible is telling us the truth. The Bible say that he, the most subtired creature that God created. Right, and man, when I tell you, he can really throw some defense on us and disguise the defense. And we'll throw right into double coverage every time. Right, he'll start off like he in the zone, but it goes straight to man to man, right, quick.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm not saying don't, don't gather people and share the gospel, I'm not saying that, and it's, and we're being recorded. I am not saying, don't do that, but I am saying, don't let that be a substitute. For making disciples after the biblical standard of Jesus.
And that's what America and the rest of the world have done. They have substituted that for making disciples.
And people get saved there, people get saved in those settings, so I'm not telling them, don't do them. I'm just saying, don't give up the best for the good.
Uh, Soup, is that, uh, I think it's in the historical record that, uh, uh, Billy Graham contacted, uh. Mister Trot. Because of that very same concern that they were reaching many, many, many people in the crowd, but they were not. Having any follow-up, uh, of the great commission, I, I remember that correct?
Yep, correct.
Mr. Cameron, you made a statement earlier in reference to autopsy, your life. With me or to me, can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, autopsy is, when, when somebody autopsies a body, what do you see?
The cause of death, uh, go ahead, go ahead, support.
Everything inside, everything.
See, everything inside, nothing's hid. Another word you could use is transparency. So how many people wanna live transparent before someone else? Could that be something, well, could that be something Jesus was modeling to us? The way he did disciple making, because he was with his guys twenty-four seven, you can't hide nothing when you with folks a long, long time. See, us married men, we can hide stuff from folks outside the household, but you can't hide none from the wife inside.
Say that again, Sue. I got it, I was just saying it again.
Yeah.
Cause that's, that's so true.
That's right, yeah, can't hide nothing inside the house when you with somebody all the time, ain't that righteous, Black? I see you back there.
Right.
That's right.
You found all those purses and shoes hidden under the bed.
That's right.
Got eyes in the back of the head, mine do.
Yeah, so, so what's one of the best place to do your discipling or have your disciples around you, what's one of the best place to have them around you?
In your home.
Right in your house.
In your home, or somewhere, somewhere, they may see you as somebody different on the outside, but somewhere you gonna step up and be real at the house. And they gonna see who y'all.
Amen, absolutely.
But that's what they need to see. That's why, that's why they don't look at the fellowship gathering as a real thing, they don't look at it as real. Cause we all confront for hour, hour and a half.
Yeah.
Not even talk, not even talk, come in there. And then get there and, 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 and make everybody think, man, you got the, right now, your marriage is top ten. Make them think it, get back in the car here at home, don't say nothing to each other for two more days. So we confront for hour and a half, good, we good at it.
Oh, my God, so we make up, we dress up, we show up, and we fake up.
Come on, man. We all been there. And then communion time come, we be like, we ease over, honey, you know, I'm sorry for what I, how I talked to you. Cause you don't want nobody to see you not taking communion and ask you, hey, how come you didn't take communion? You don't have to tell them, hey, me and my wife blowed up on the way to church, you know, you won't have to say that. So you, so you, so you be like, okay, hey, uh, you know, I wanna get this right with you and. We all been there, come on now.
Uh, that's correct, Sue, that happened to me last week with my wife.
Yes, sir.
I hadn't, as a credit, I have never invited. A white group into my home to spend the night. Until last week, right, never had. And I mean, all the generation from my dad on up to me, right? I cannot explain to my wife the, 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 the fellowship that I had with this, that she's a white person. And she didn't understand it, and she didn't wanna accept it, she wanted to know why was I doing it, I said, you just got to let it do. What it do. That's all I can tell you.
Yes, sir.
And when that guy pulled up in that little car, that was not the way she thought my white friends supposed to look. That white guy got out of that car with his wife, we hugged. I had never met his wife, that spent thirty-five and sat with us. My wife today can say, my God, I would have never thought that I would fall in love with these people. These people sat in my house and played jazz on instrument.
Yes, sir.
They played the jazz, they didn't play, they played music, we ate together, we went to a brace they party together. I showed them Eddie Robinson, somebody they had never heard of. I said, baby, soup don't touch me and make me go to the other side, and I ain't finna stop, I ain't finna stop. I say, shoot, nah, I'm telling people I don't care, I don't have a mansion. But if you wanna come to real credit house, the Holy Spirit gonna have to show me, and I'm not gonna just go out here. And just invite anybody into my home, right?
They in the network, they in the network, they in the network.
That's what she don't understand, get in this with us.
You know, well, he plays trumpet, she played a ukulele, a violin, a fiddle or something, don't she?
No, no, she played the karat net, like that little bit of small.
That's right.
Yeah. I got it on tape, cause, cause, uh, they, uh, I had to put it on tape, cause people wouldn't believe me if I told them. So I got it on tape, I got them on tape playing it, I got them on tape in our house. We had a ball, I went, I did everything that you had said, I went to the other side. My wife was so pleased with it and everything, we had a ball, and when I'm telling you. The devil did everything he could to mess that up, everything, everything he could. My wife was such a, that's, that's a, 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 uh, she, she received that. And now she got new friends, because people like me don't wanna go to the other side.
Well, how's that, how's that gonna be an impact for her in where she works now?
It has already started to impact her, because some, the people that come into our office. She want me, as I told her, we need to start inviting some of them people over to this eat Sunday dinner with us. Right, and then when they start eating Sunday dinners with us, they are freshmen, they gonna send back to their mother in other country. I'm not, they're talking about, uh, uh, people right here in Ruston, but these people live in other country. So now they gonna see us, they gonna send it back, mama, we went to this home and we ate. And they had some good greens and some good chicken and some barbecue ribs, and we ate potatoes. We, I'm, I'm so excited about my wife. There's now, as, 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 as Jesus asked his disciples, now do you believe? I said, now do you believe? He said, baby, you right. So we got to grow, but it took time. They're like, it took me time. But I was illuminated. That don't mean I'm better than her. But the first time I heard you come out the gate speaking, boom, I say, hey, this is him. I'm finna follow him. Like, like you said, you could have said, come follow me. And I'd have did, dead like those disciples. I'd have left everything and followed you as I am doing now. I am following you.
Well, we know it took them at least three years for that to break down in them.
Three years.
At least three years.
Yes. So you think my wife, I don't care how long it take, I ain't going nowhere, cause like you say, she is my faith disciple.
Yes, sir. Yes.
She my faith. And it gonna start, pretty soon we gonna start, we doing addition now. But we gonna start the must, mustification here soon.
All right. So now, here's what, here's how we want to, go ahead, Dr. Fred, you got something? Supor, you was gonna say something a while ago. Do you have something?
No, I was just trying to be present as much as possible.
Okay. All right. See, this is how we're gonna close it out today. All right. Does everybody agree? You don't have to agree. Does everybody see what we getting at? That one of Satan's subtle substitutes is, is if your disciple making is homogeneous.
I do.
And what do we mean by that? What do we mean by that? It can multiply. It could be a good process. It could, it could reach, it could go into a lot of nations, but not truly be a fulfillment, a true fulfillment of commission if it's what?
Homogeneous?
Yeah. And what is homogeneous?
All the same.
All the same ethnicity. All the same ethnicity. Okay? All right. Now, or gene type, okay? In other words, if our only disciple, black people meet, and that's all my disciples are is black people, then it's homogeneous. It's really not pontificate its name. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir. And I now have a bracelet that you gave us. You gave us a great bracelet, Revelation, seven brace nine.
Okay. All right. Now, so what do I need to do as a strategy? You gotta be intentional. What is gonna be one of my intentional strategies to make sure my disciple making is not just homogeneous? Dr. Fred, God already brought one to your household. Tell us about that.
Um, there's some young ladies, um, at a local college.
But tell them how they got there. How they, you know nothing about them.
Yeah, Loretta and I didn't know anything about them. And Mr. Campbell and Ms. Campbell came to our house and their driver, Preston, uh, was friends with some young ladies there in Birmingham. And he told them that we were, they were at our house and somehow.
Do they work, do they work at Walmart? Is that way south? They work at Walmart?
No, they're students at a college.
Now you getting on down in there. Come on.
Uh, and, and it's like about ten minutes from our house. I didn't even know about the university. But Loretta did and they got invited over to our house and they came over and ate and then, then they came back again. So they've been there twice and they in connection with Loretta and I. And they're young girls that.
Black girls. Black girls.
No, they ain't black. Mm-mm. No. They're young white ladies, young white girls. And, uh, they had a great time sharing with us their faith story the last time they were there. Their faith, yeah, how they came to know Christ.
So what, what, they in, they in college, right?
They in college.
You, is that college only got white people on it?
They got people from all over the world. A lot of different.
Right there, you got a conduit to the world right there. You reckon there'll be any students left over there during the Thanksgiving holidays?
Probably so. Yeah. Loretta said we can have Thanksgiving at our house.
See?
She out front of me now.
See? Yes, sir. Well, you, you do the, you, you do the cooking. That's what you do.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'll do that.
Yeah. So right there, what would be your strategy to continue that? That's just one aspect. That may be just one prong that God does, but he's just brought that right up in your living room.
My strategy gonna be to follow up with those young ladies and invite them back and then ask them and invite any other of their friends back. And then as the holidays are coming around, we'll just be more intentional about reaching out and asking those young ladies to help us reach out to some other students who may be on the campus and need a meal or sometime throughout the year. Not necessarily just wait for a holiday, but focus on the holidays too.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Right there.
Ever thought about, uh, ever thought about having like some even like once a month? Or once every two months, just for those, those group of students?
Well, let him, let him just, just let him start with these young ladies. Have, have you got that going? Are you doing that with your students currently?
Not currently, but I've done it.
All right. When you do it, when you do it, then you tell him how you doing it.
Like I said, I've done it before. Not doing it currently. Coming in different state right now. I've done it. And a lot of them is coming over there.
Well, when you get initiated going, you let him know and let him reach out to you. But let him, let him just start with his little, just let him start how he's going now and, uh, let him roll on with that. All right. Somebody else, what's your strategy?
I have a question.
Yes.
So, and this might be a slow question, but I'm asking anyway. Um, we talked about like, like a lot of different like kind of ethnic groups, you know, just to disciple to, but like, will we kind of relate that to like different like personality groups too? Like, cause when you ask the question, like if there was someone that you wouldn't like, like you would kind of turn away. I didn't think, I guess, like of like race, you know, I thought of like, you know, like char, you know, character traits, some things that would be, I guess, the most challenging. Like that came to mind when you were talking about that.
Yeah. Now, you talked about, are you talking about somebody to disciple?
I mean, just generally, yeah, well, not for me per se right now, but, um, just thinking like this, I, I believe where a lot of challenges, I guess, come in. Cause I think, you know, with the multiplying, like the start, you know, it seems okay when people are really like interested, but like when you kind of start to get deep into, you know, like, I guess people like, like who they truly, you know, who they truly are and stuff like that. I think that's where it gets tough, you know, to, to kind of push. Am I making sense? Am I making sense?
Great. Hey, you're doing, you're doing excellent. You're doing excellent. And it's a great question, but it cannot be answered in, in, in one, one statement. Because what, your question is very multifaceted. Okay? Great question, but it's very multifaceted. And what I'm gonna ask Supor, put your, Supor, put your phone number in the chat. Do you have Supor's phone number?
Oh, yeah. She from Helena. We try her friend.
All right. Supor can help you with that a lot, cause I'm sure she's experienced that a lot. And so, so dialogue with her on that, but that's a multifaceted question that we, we would need to get to and break it down. You got a lot of questions in one. And so we would need to break it down, okay? Uh, as far as just building a relationship, as far as someone who's asked you to disciple them. And that, it's a whole lot of, uh, facets and aspects to your question, which is a great question, okay? Yeah. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying we're not gonna get at it. We will. But we just, we, we got to really dig into that question, but this is a good one, okay? Great question. All right. So what we want to focus on now also is where you are. We, we talked about Dr. Jones. What's gonna be your strategy to keep your disciple making from being homogeneous?
Hey, I just want to say, um, if it's okay, I just want to say like, I'm excited about what Dr. Fred is doing cause that works like the college strategy because there's so many people on. And that's what, um, that's what my strategy has been is just teaming up with an organization that's already uh, working with, uh, internationals, but need people to build those relationships. And, um, then meeting people through that and bringing them home for the holidays and and just seeing, we were literally talking and then we saw one of the girls from one of the gatherings, uh, walking down the street that we saw. And so they all kind of live in the same areas close to the school. And just, just from spending time with them, like just how hungry they are to meet people from this country and to, to, to have relationships and so. And Salita's birthday was yesterday and we had a birthday party for her and there were several different nations that were there. And, um, and we just had a good time with them. And so that, that strategy really works with just starting off, inviting them to a meal or hanging out. And it is, it's really effective for getting you alongside people, um, of other countries. So I'm excited that Dr. Fred is doing that and, and Ms. Loretta. I can't wait to hear the results.
Yeah, it's good. And, uh, see, we, uh, one of the young ladies in Supor's networking group, uh, we, we're gonna stop in Tokyo this year and she may have contacts there that we're gonna use and connect with even in Tokyo. So I'm telling you, from a college campus, those folks go everywhere. Bro, black, where's some pockets of folks like, like I was talking to one of my African disciples and they were telling me about how they were going to different countries. They had different tribes and stuff like that. And I said, uh, but you're still homogeneous. They're still Africans. I said, do you have Chinese there in your country? Yes. In your city? Yes. Do you have Indians in your city? Yes. Do you have Americans there? Yes. And, and what, what people of other ethnicities, the ones they overlook is the Americans. Because in our, in our society and through history, so many cultures and nations have been made to feel inferior to Americans that they won't go after them for the gospel. They won't approach them much. They won't, they, 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 but they some of the most lost people in the country they got. So I said, any Americans in there, any, any Asians in there? Then you gotta have a strategy go out to them in your country.
Exactly. Yes. When I was there this year, we practiced and did training, uh, and even did simulations on how to reach the various, uh, ethnic groups from other countries. What you named, the Indians, uh, people from China. Yeah, there are many of them having supermarkets and things. Uh, and then our university campuses, I remember some of the earlier teachings.
Hey, wait a minute. We're not talking about them. We're talking about you.
Oh, me? Okay. Oh, okay. So you, you restate the question, cause I, I was hearing it another way.
Yeah. What's your strategy for not being homogeneous personally where you are?
Oh, okay. That's an easy one there. Uh, every day our strategy is, uh, meeting whoever we meet, wherever we meet them now. We have different nations like, uh, Haiti in the United Kingdom. We're starting a new teaching in the United Kingdom now, uh, in Liverpool, Manchester and, uh, uh, and London. But even here, right here in the United States, uh, we attend uh, Caucasian congregations, especially right here in our town, because we don't see any other kind here on purpose, just to get a chance to, uh, disciple them and to share the great commission with them. But everywhere we go on the street, on a personal level, on a daily basis, uh, every kind of person, whether they're Chinese, Japanese, uh, whether they are Indian or whoever they are, if they're shop owners or waiters or waitresses, uh, we have the same approach to, uh, approach them in a way that would lead them into the disciple making process. To evangelize them first, share the good news with them if they are not saved, if devil confess Christ is their savior. And then move on to inviting them into the disciple making process. So we are pushing that everywhere we go.
Thank you. All right. Supor, what you got going?
I was gonna say something you used to say, or you say a lot. I didn't understand at first, but now I understand. And you talk about hospitality and I'm just learning that if we don't, uh, get better at our hospitality, then we're not going to be able to reach these nations, cause that's so, so important. And so I'm trying to master my Chinese, so I can have tea time, so I can have good tea. Um, invite people over just for tea, you know? So I, I think we really, really have to work on that, having something to put before people. Um, and hospitality is just a deep, deep thing to learn and it's about people and others. And so, yeah, that, I think that's been important for our strategy is really learning what that looks like.
And then many internationals, many internationals, are they more used to, uh, institutions or they more used to a home?
I'm on hold. They're more used to a home.
That's right. So where's the greatest place that you can hold and control and determine the kind of hospitality that that, 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 that should go forth? Where's the best place you can establish, control that and determine what that looks like? Where's that?
In your home.
Come on. So don't underutilize your home. I'm telling young folks today, when you go to buy a home and or build a home, think hospitality in your design and plan. Think hospitality in your design and plan when you buy a home, go to build one, that kind of thing. Think hospitality. How does this home layout gonna help me to do hospitality? And Dr. Jones them got a great hospitality set up down in their place, just, just a good community area right there. And so, and you know, we was at a home, uh, this weekend, a friend of mine, where we just kind of hung out. Their home is set up for hospitality and for community, community and communion and that kind of thing. So think through those things. If we're gonna think great commission, because great commission is holistic. It covers every area of life. It has to consume us. All right. So next week, uh, when we come on the beginning, let's, let's report in. Uh, let's report in. How, what, where are we gonna find the pockets of people where we live that I, that our great commission and, and our disciple making has the best opportunity to be, uh, all nations, all Thai ethnic, and not just mono, uh, not just, uh, homogeneous. Does that make sense, y'all?
Makes good sense. Good sense.
Yeah. Yeah. To be homogeneous is the easiest default. We have to be intentional about the all nations. And then pray Psalms two and eight. Let's let that be our closing prayer for the day. Well, first of all, let's have a few people, what you walk away with? Well, first of all, let's have a few people, what you walk away with?
That, that, that word homogeneous, uh, uh, homo, homogeneous or whatever, so that was a new one that leaped out to me immediately. And so I at least learned that one for sure. And, and it made, yeah, what you taught on it made me aware of, of how easy it is to get locked into what's comfortable, uh, and what's familiar. But at the same time, we were already feeling led to reach out to many other or any other ethnic group, uh, because the, the, the things that I have been able to teach in many of the different ethnic churches around here is that I don't see anybody in here but you. You are in a neighborhood, but none of those people in the neighborhood are in here. So that's been, been a hard one to get across, but we're practicing that.
Good, good. All right. Somebody else, real breeze, what you walk away with?
But Sue, I walk away with, I had never read Revelation seventy-nine and seen the fact that God can number, a number that no man can number. I don't read that many times and never, never seen that until today. That it'd be a number that man can't even think of. That's, that, that was great for me.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? What you walk away with? Bro, Julia, y'all out there?
Let me see.
Cornelius gone?
My takeaway is, um, what you said about how like we could do the multiplying, um, we could do all the we could be doing all the things right, doing the multiplying and getting after people. But if our disciple making doesn't have all nations, it's still not the biblical model. And so I don't wanna get comfortable with like, okay, yeah, I got, I got folks and, um, that are here, uh, just like just that being the subtle substitute. That was, that was a big takeaway for me. I'm trying to learn all the subtle substitutes.
Yeah. Well, this fellowship here is not homo, not homo, homogeneous.
Not at all.
You see? All right. Anybody else? Bro, Julia, she out there?
I don't think she's on.
Okay. Martin? Martin out there? Kimboa, Kimboa Martin?
Yes, he should be there as his network. Yeah, he's got.
Good, good to hear from you. What you walk away with today?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just here in Uganda and, uh, but I, I want to ask a question.
Okay. Can't promise you we gonna answer it right now, but go ahead and ask it.
All right. About, uh, homogeneous. Uh, like for me, I've, I've got to also listen to that, uh, for example, if you teach, if you teach there in the USA, you also do the same, uh, here, there, let, let me say Uganda. And you are teaching the, uh, you are teaching different people, but with the same content. Could that also mean homogeneous?
I, 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 I don't know if I'm following your question well. Can you ask it again?
All right. Like I'm asking that, uh, for example, you are teaching there in USA. You do, you do the same also in Africa, let me say Uganda. Uh, like you, you are teaching different people, uh, those that side and also this one of, of, let me say Uganda. So, uh, and you are teaching them the same content, like discipleship making, the great commission of, of our Lord. Yes, could, uh, could that also mean homogeneous?
No, homogeneous means same gene type. It has to do with people. But we, we teach the word, the great commission does not change for anybody. The word of God is the same today, yesterday and forever for anybody. For instance, if, uh, uh, are you married?
No, I am not.
Okay. Well, when you get married, your command from the Bible to love your wife will be no different from me who's been married forty years this year to love my wife. It'd be no different.
All right.
The command for you to fulfill the great commission is no different from someone who lives in a dock, who lives in the Massamar, who lives in a village, or who lives in the palace. The great commission is the same.
Wow. Thank you so much for that.
Great question. Thank you. Okay. One other person, what you walk away with?
I was, um, contemplating the inroad strategy, uh, to college students in my area. And listening to what Zipporah said, just opened up my mind when she say, uh, pursue other groups that already have relationships. And so I thought that was a great nugget that she gave.
Mm-hmm. And what's the key word in that, Rick?
Pursue.
There you go. There you go. There you go. I really believe God's got more people ready to be in our network than we are willing to pursue after them.
I'm in agreement.
And I tell you what, if I had a kid in another country, I sure wish somebody would come and, and bring some hope. I don't know if that's the right word, some hope, some community, some family, some, some, you know, I don't, I don't know if the right word is comfort, but some kinda security to where if they got, even if they, even if they got the flu or got sick on campus, how, how big is a bowl of soup, y'all? And some thorough flu, how big is that?
It's major.
Man. I remember the first time away from home in college, getting sick, I thought I was about to die. Didn't have none but the flu, but you ain't home, you ain't, ain't nobody rub no vic, vapor rub on you and, and check on you. Y'all feel me? It's huge. And you don't think, you don't think them folks gonna call home and say, you know, I was, I wasn't feeling well. I was just sitting out there and this man named Will Credit, uh, he, he, he invited me over to eat some turnip greens and some cornbread and, and just, uh, and I, and I washed my clothes while I was there and just they gonna say, oh, man, I want, I can't wait to meet Mr. Will Credit.
You got that right. Sue, that's why I never did get sick in the neighborhood. I was scared because I went at home. I said, nah, I can't get sick. My grandma might get an infection. My grandma not here to blow no smoke in my ear. I, I stayed with the whole three years.
Yes, sir. Well, I hope, I hope this was okay. I thank y'all for coming on. I hope we learned something today. I hope we got it something. Uh, all I'm doing is just imparting and sharing what I'm learning and what's helping me in the fulfillment of this commission and, uh, and trying to be careful and be aware of the subtle substitutes the enemy can lay out before us to help us, to keep us from totally at the maximum, being the best we can at walking this commission out. So God bless y'all. Appreciate you and see you next week. Cornelius, you still on here?
He might have left. Thank, okay, Sue. Thank you again, Sue. Appreciate you. Love y'all.
Okay, see y'all.
Very good teaching. Very good. Thank you.